Good morning. I would like to call this 216th organizational meeting to order. I'll... Please. Can you just be quiet?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all matters.
I would like to ask you to begin standing. Could I ask the county clerk to come up please to sing "America Beautiful"? Susan, can you hold up this one?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I would like to call county clerk please to give the indication.
Dear Heavenly Father, we bow our heads in humility as we stand in your presence. As we begin in the year, let us renew our commitment to serve others. Make us mindful of our responsibilities to others and to our county. Let us be joyful as we go about our duties in your name. Give us your Spirit of wisdom as we address each problem that comes before us. We pray for those who are sick and are deceased in a special way. We remember the repose of the soul of Governor Mario Cuomo. Grant him your rest and give consolation and peace to his family. Remember those in our armed forces, keep them safe from those who intend them harm. Bless this board of supervisors, its chairman and vice chairman, and its officers as we go forth through 2015. And we ask all of this of your most holy and precious name. Amen.
Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesties above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for patriot's dream that sees beyond the years, thine alabaster cities gleam, undim'd by human tears. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
Here.
Mr. Merriman?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here. Here.
Mr. Kirby?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. McAllen?
Here.
Mr. Scottbauer?
Here.
Mr. Manin?
Here. Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Brownell?
Here.
Mr. Whitson?
Here.
Mr. Brinnell?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mr. Blilin?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
I will now call for nominations for the 2015 temporary chairman of the board.
Madam Clerk, I would like to move the name of George Cannon from the sound of Muffin as temporary chairman for 2015.
Madam Clerk, it's my honor to second Mr. Whitson's motion. Thank you.
Mr. Whitson moves the name of Mr. Cannon, selected by Mr. Cleese. Are there other nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Mr. Cannon as temporary chair.
I'll second that.
Alves in favor?
Aye.
And votes carried. Will Mr. Moore and Mr. Scottbauer lead the court? Mr. Cannon will be the temporary chair this morning. He will be the day.
I'm George Cannon.
I'm George Cannon, and I'm a county clerk. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge. I will faithfully discharge. Do the temporary chair. Do the temporary chair. Yes, county board supervisor. Yes, county board supervisor.
This is my dear, honorable. First order of business, we adopt the rules and regulations of the governance board of the year 2015.
I am Mr. Number One, adopting rules and regulations of proceedings against this county board of supervisors.
Motion on the resolution. Mr. Brownell, second. Harrington. Discussion. If being done, roll call the board.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriman?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scottbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Cleese?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Manin?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Brinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Blilin?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
At this time, I'll ask for nominations for the 2015 temporary chair. County board supervisor, Mr. Scottbauer, as the chair. As a member of this board supervisor, which for a quarter of a century, I have the privilege of serving with many different chairmen through the years. Mr. Cannon and Mr. Moore have also been around for a long time. With Mr. Cannon, I believe, served as chairman of this body on two separate occasions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Moore never actually pursued the chairmanship through the years because back in the day, there was one or two Democrats on the board, so he didn't really change. But I pursued it once or twice, and the closest I ever got was vice chair. And I served under Matt Clark from Noradella. And in all due respect, back then, being vice chair was not an easy task like it is today. But actually, when I served under Matt. Then I thought about running this time around and decided I didn't think I would have the support. Leave my own vote as question of vote, not that I've changed my mind that often. Our current chairman has done an excellent job. And even though his first vice chairman often quit on his first term, for whatever reason, personally, I don't think Romy could face the severe pressure that the position of vice chair brings on. I do miss Romy as vice chair, and in a lot of ways, he reminded me of Dan Quayle. Our current chairman, Randy Douglas, has seen this county and also his town through some of the most, if not the most difficult times that I can ever remember. Through the devastation flooding from Lee and Irene, the closure of the Lake Champlain Bridge, the almost closure of Mariah Shock, the men continuing to open the new jail called the Safety Building, the sale of the nursing home, and on top of that, still has to deal with the day-to-day operations of this county. It's not an easy job, and you extra pay, but what he does is minimal, considering the hours that this man works and what's involved. To do this job and do it right, you have to be committed with the betterment of this county, and you have to have that fire in your belly every day, which Randy Douglas has. You have to be able to communicate with officials at all levels of government, and you need to build a network of people that you can count on and trust. And you have to be able to disagree or agree to disagree, and also, massively, are compromised. But most importantly, you have to remember that each of us here today served on this body for one reason, that we were elected by our constituents to represent their interests. And it is a privilege for us to be here. None of us hold these seats, the people do. Randy Douglas has never forgotten that. He has served this body well, but he is also always for his constituents first. Mr. Chair, it's my honor to nominate Randy Douglas for an unprecedented sixth term, six-time, for chairman of this board of supervisors for the year 2015. I will second Mr. Scottbauer's presentation. Mr. Moore?
I will second that, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how I'm going to follow up that.
Oh, you're right.
Now, we've had a lot of, I've been here this is my 22nd year, and we've had a lot of real good chairpersons for the county board. The truth is, anybody at one time or the other can be chairpersons if they ask to be and really push for it, and I will clarify, I second Mr. Scottbauer. Adam, there, Adam. But for somebody to pick up the chairpersons, the chairmen of the board of Esses County Supervisors, and do it like Mr. Douglas has presented himself, six, going into a sixth term, this is never heard of. You have to be not only run chairman of the board of supervisors, which is basically pretty good, chair meeting, all of us can chair meetings, but like Mr. Scottbauer has said, he's done above and beyond. He not only has listened to the supervisors here, he's also listened to the county constituents, and has went, and also has went to the state level. It takes a lot of time to do that. I really could not do that. Mr. Douglas has proven himself to do that with the state and all the problems we've had in Esses County, and to the federal government also. That is the true mark of a leader, not only a chairman or a representative of the people, a leader. And Mr. Douglas has shown and proven that he is a leader for all of us. Not always getting the answer that you want. It's compromise, like Mr. Scottbauer said, you compromise, you listen to the people, you take and blend everything together. We can't do everything the people want, but we explain it to them, and we do the best we can, and that's what Mr. Douglas has done for the last five years. And my full faith is an honor for me to second this nomination, Mr. Douglas, such as I served with his father on board, and I never served with his grandfather, but I know they're all looking down here going, wow, are we proud of our boy. And so is the family of Mr. Douglas now, so proud of this moment. Thank you very much for considering the sixth unprecedented term. Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Scottbauer moves Mr. Douglas's name and nomination, selected by Mr. Moore. Are there other nominations? And I'll take the pleasure of moving the nomination to be closed, and the clerk casts one ballot for Mr. Douglas as a 2015 chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would Mr. Merriman and Mr. Connell please escort Mr. Douglas to county clerk for the county public office this morning?
I'm Randy Douglas.
I'm Randy Douglas.
Solumne square.
Solumne square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Will you be as chairman?
Will you be as chairman?
For the Essex County Board of Supervisors?
For the Essex County Board of Supervisors.
According to the best amendment?
According to the best amendment. Good morning, everyone. We will now call for nominations for the 2015 vice chairman of the Essex County Board of Supervisors.
Chairman, I was very proud and honored to move, and they, Bill Kirby and Mr. Carter, I was lucky enough to have you place me at the seat next to him last year when I took this office. I found him not only to be a wise counsel and trusted advisor, but I hope to be a very good friend as well. He's very much surprised me, not only because of his excellent leadership as a town key, but also he, as a sitting vice chairman, he doesn't act just waiting in the wings, but he's an integrated member of the issue team of this county. And as part of that team, that team that led us through from financial prevail, natural disaster, and now the renaissance of the county, and that Plaigworth County is better off, but in so many ways, going into 2015, so it's my pleasure to nominate for Bill Kirby. Thank you, Mr. Go ahead.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second the nomination. As you know, brevity and honesty is the key to good and sound dialogue in this room. Having said that, I can think of no better candidate than for vice chair than Bill Kirby. So it's my honor to second that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Manin?
I will move the nominations to be closed, and I'm lucky to be but a chairman of the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any calls? Mark the strike. Would Mr. Moore and Mr. Brownell please escort Mr. Kirby to the county clerk this morning?
I'm Lee Kirby, county clerk, Solumne square, Solumne square, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
Will you be the vice chairman?
Will you be the vice chairman?
Yes, county board supervisor.
Yes, county board supervisor. According to the best amendment? Go ahead.
I want to thank the board of the board for another term of life here, which is two-pointed below and two-pointed for race for the county boards, both boards working with Chairman Douglas for another year and award, and the other employees of Esses County. I guess for my tenure as vice chair with Mr. Douglas, my biggest challenge was then to keep Mr. Douglas healthy. Because if you reflect back on the first nomination by Mr. Scottbauer for nine in my first year for vice chair, I just close the statement, he said, let's hope Mr. Douglas doesn't get sick. I worked very hard to keep Mr. Douglas well. Randy did a great job. And as those people have said, I got this changed back in the wings anticipating moving up to chairman one day because I cannot foresee Mr. Douglas leaving the chair. But thanks all again, Mr. Black, the board, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before I begin, I wanted to thank many people who made this all happen today, county manager, the county clerk, over a lot of Judy Dean and Maureen Devon and Lori for working so hard on such short notice. For me, altogether, it drove the 216th organizational meeting together. A lot of work goes behind the scenes, and they did a great job, so I really do appreciate their efforts. Also, I'm very happy that Susan Richards came and shared this very special day with me, and most of all, can share that beautiful voice with you all once again. I'm very fortunate, my beloved wife, that you would be here today. Over the last 13 days, my family life has been turned upside down with medicals like bruising calls. As I sit here today, my mom and my uncle Bob are dealing with serious medical issues that I hope and pray will make a positive turnaround very soon. Sure enough, my wife has been my rock and has been here with me for almost 30 years. She is the most understanding person I ever met, ever met, to let me continue to serve in all these government capacities that I currently do. I don't know how to say no, and as my wife said to me on a walk in the rain yesterday, I'm just a buck for her pie. I want to thank this time, especially thank the three longest-running supervisors on this board for playing such a special role in today's festivities. Please join me in a round of applause for three lead three supervisors, George Cannon, Tom Scottbauer, and Jerry Moore, for their longevity, for their accountability, and their service to all of Esses County. Everywhere I travel, and as you all know from last week's article, I travel, why not? Everyone knows George Cannon, from Albany to Washington. If this truly is your last year, my friend, it is only fitting to send you out on top once again, if only for a few minutes, as chairman, where you served so diligently twice before. I also would ask us all to keep in our thoughts and prayers, Governor Cuomo's family, with the passing of his dad, former Governor Mario Cuomo. One of the most notable events beginning in 2015 was burned by a country friend and his family, from his old office to the passing of his dad in just a few hours. I know how much he loved his father, as we shared many conversations over the last few years as to how much our dad has been a part of our lives. The governor told my daughter, Spanish, Upper J, this past August at the dedication of the Upper J Fighter Club. He told her this, you have a wonderful dad, and so do I, speaking of his dad. Savannah replied, very unfortunate, governor. Our thoughts and prayers over the Cuomo family, Cuomo family, and this extremely difficult time in their lives. Supervisors Scottbauer, Kirby, and myself will be heading immediately from this meeting in pair of respects of the weight of the funeral for Governor Mario Cuomo on behalf of us all here in Esses County. To my colleagues on the board of supervisors, it is truly an honor for you to have the faith in myself and Vice Chairman Kirby to serve another term as your leader. My promise to you all is to continue to serve each and every one of you with honesty, integrity, integrity, and energy. Your trust in me is something I do not take lightly. Together, we have faced some turf and the tugs over the last five years, from the announcement of the closing of Mariah Shock and the fight to keep it alive and well today, the closing and replacement of the Lake Champlain Bridge in Roundmount, the sale of Forest Mine, nursing home, and the building of the emergency services radio system, and the effects of Hurricane Irene, the name of you. Over this next year, we will continue to look at ways to consolidate without reducing services that our constituents have come to rely on. We will continue to lobby for grant funding to build new or repair water and sewer systems in all our towns throughout Esses County. We will continue to lobby state legislature, the state legislature, to reduce and in some cases possibly eliminate mandated services no longer affordable to our local taxpayers. We will continue to try and leverage funding from state and federal government to improve our Olympic facilities that have deteriorated so drastically that we are losing world-class events in Utah and Colorado. We will continue to work with Paco Naro officials and international paper to convince the states Vermont, New York to approve a natural gas pipeline to the Lake Champlain. We will work with the state, Oregon, and local officials to have a grand opening ceremony for Whitefish, Ohio, Ohio. We will continue to rebuild all of the county-owned bridges that were damaged from many storm remedy years in our desperate need of repairs or replacement. We will continue to look at ways to be more energy efficient, including the possibility of installing solar power panels at some areas of the county complex. We will make good on our promise to evaluate management salaries and staff and other. We will begin negotiating with the help of Daya Bummer and Daya Manning on our new labor agreement contract with our CSA, CSA ranking file members. We will continue to meet and figure out safe and convenient ways to provide services and deals to our senior citizens in need. We will strive to have a positive outcome for all, once again, taking ownership of the Badrums Memorial Cemetery in Wolfville. We will continue to work with five counties in Hamilton County to reach our full economic potential with the finished private estate payment acquisition. In closing, as I just summarized, we have our work cut out as we face many challenges ahead to make Esses County a better place. I promise you, we will rise to the occasion. I assure you that I will continue to work in a bipartisan way with all our town, county, state, federal officials, and agencies to keep Esses County's needs in the eyes and minds of all. I wish Congressmen Knowans well in his retirement, and I look forward to working with Congresswoman -elect Emily Stefano. My friends and colleagues, I'm here to tell you that the state of Esses County is well, but we will strive to make it better together. May God bless you, and may God bless Esses County. May God bless you and may God bless Essex County. I'm going to ask Julie Garrison, who was really the boss here today, to call her, um, one of the elected officials to come and go to the panel with the police force. Julie?
Okay, so first one, County Manager, Dana Palmer.
Hi Dana Palmer, I'm Justice Allen Swer, Justice Allen Swer. But I will support the Constitution of the United States. I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The County Manager.
The duties of County Manager.
Essex County, for Essex County, according to the best my ability.
Mr. Derrick, I ask, um, Justice Madison, Justice Madison, Deputy.
That's what, Mr. Madison, if you come forward. Congratulations, Mr. Madison.
I'm Justice Allen Swer. But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Deputy County Manager.
The duties of Deputy County Manager.
For Essex County.
For Essex County.
According to the best my ability.
According to the best my ability.
Thank you very much.
Would you call up the District General or Essex County Treasurer, please, to make the peace score up?
I have the honor of privilege today of having my own escorts with me.
Thank you.
And my grandson, Julio, my granddaughter, Abel, and this is the family. And also want to let you all know that Billy is holding a vital role in my power. It's the first time he hasn't been any credit. I know he's here.
I'm Michael Madison.
I'm Michael Madison.
Justice Allen Swer.
Justice Allen Swer.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Essex County.
Right, for the duties of Essex County Treasurer.
According to the best my ability.
According to the best my ability. One of the things I have is a good support system, not only at the office but at home. And one of my biggest supporters does not like to come up front and be recognized, but I'm going to recognize her, the audience. And that is my wind between, the wind beneath my wings, and that's my beautiful wife, Betsy. Not only keeping me and keeping me hopefully on the correct path for the last forty years. And if I could borrow an analogy from a sports team, any good coach is only as good as the team that he puts on the field. I have a fantastic, I have a fantastic team behind me. I have a couple of excellent captains in my team. I'd like to honor them by asking Jane Haskins and Lisa Decker to come up and be appointed as morning as Deputy Treasurer to the Treasurer's Office.
I'm Jane Haskins.
I'm Jane Haskins.
Justice Allen Swer.
Justice Allen Swer.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Essex County Deputy Treasurer.
The duties of Essex County Deputy Treasurer.
Right, and yeah.
For Essex County.
According to the best my ability.
I'm Lisa Decker.
I'm Lisa Decker.
Justice Allen Swer.
Justice Allen Swer.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Essex County Deputy Treasurer.
The duties of Essex County.
For Essex County.
For Essex County.
According to the best my ability.
Richard Cuddy, Essex County Sheriff, please, of course.
I, Richard Cuddy.
I, Richard Cuddy.
Justice Allen Swer.
Justice Allen Swer.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Essex County Sheriff.
The duties of Essex County Sheriff.
According to the best my ability.
According to the best my ability. That person that just ran away is my support, Mr. Duskin says, forty years and my brother-in-law telling me what to do and keeping me on the straight and narrow. And I'd like to take this opportunity to remind the sheriff of and having reappointed this morning, this uh... There he is.
I'm Michael Badger.
I'm Michael Badger.
Justice Allen Swer.
Justice Allen Swer.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Essex County Sheriff.
The duties of Essex County Sheriff.
According to the best my ability.
According to the best my ability.
Before we move to resolutions, just a quick comment. I'd like to thank our dear friend from the governor's office, Jeff Fairbys here. Thank you, Jeff. If anybody has any needs from Governor Cuomo's office, Jeff is always available and I appreciate you taking the time to be here. Also, I want to thank my Vice Chair, Bill Verri. Bill is always, you know, as a Vice Chair, there's a lot more that goes into it. I do like to see that Bill has always been there to be supportive, attend functions in events that I can't make or meetings and I really, it has been a pleasure serving you as my Vice Chairman. Lastly, I'd like to thank Nina. When I got here this morning for a ten-minute, I was late ten minutes for a meeting with Mr. Moore. So I got here and I said, "Nina, help us and you type, I have a speech." And Moore tells me he can't read my writing, so well, you have to give it to him and type it in. So I got here and Nina did it in a manner and so Nina, I thank you very, very much for taking that matter. At this time, we're going to move to resolutions, so if you have a duty.
Resolution number two, operating compensation for Supervisor of Essex County.
Moved by Mr. Cannon. Seconded by Mr. Cleese, under discussion.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Cuddy.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Scottawa.
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon.
Yeah.
Mr. Flea.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Mornell. Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Burnell.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Bullock.
Yeah.
And Mr. Preston.
Yeah.
Resolution carries. Resolution number three, designating official newspapers for 2015.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Gardner, under discussion. All papers, six hundred and fifty-nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution number four, ordering the confinement of Dodd to protect the year.
Moved by Mr. Mary Utes, seconded by Mr. Burnell and Mr. Moore, under discussion. All papers, six hundred and fifty-nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution number five, adopting an investment policy and designating depositaries for different funds.
Moved by Mr. Scottawa, third second, Mr. Verri, under discussion. No problem.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Verri.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Scottawa.
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Flea.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Mornell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Burnell.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Bullock.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number six. Resolution for new property tax law, five fifty-four and five fifty-six, delegating to the Essex County Attorney, authority to approve corrections to tax walls of not more than twenty-five hundred dollars and the payment of refunds due as a result of such corrections.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Burnell, under discussion. No problem, all clear.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yeah.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Verri.
Yeah.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Scottawa.
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Flea.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Mornell.
Yeah.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Burnell.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Bullock.
Yeah.
And Mr. Preston.
Yeah.
Resolution carries. Resolution number seven, changing the date of the February twenty-fifteen regular meeting from February second to February fifth.
Moved by Mr. Cannon, seconded by Mr. Moore, under discussion. All papers, six hundred and fifty-nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution number eight, adopting proposed local law number one of twenty-fifteen.
Moved by Mr. Blake, seconded by Mr. Cleese, all clear. All discussion. No problem, all clear.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Verri.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Scottawa.
Scottawa.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Flea.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Mornell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Burnell.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Bullock.
Yeah.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number nine, recognizing Nice Hat's ninety years of dedicated service to New York counties.
Moved by Mr. Cannon, seconded by Mr. Moore, under discussion.
Resolution number ten, operating the reappointment of Charles Kip Thompson to the Board of Trustees of the Clinton Asset Strength and Library System for a five-year term, January first, twenty-fifteen through December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen.
Mr. Marion Utes, seconded by Mr. Gardner, all papers, six hundred and fifty-nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution number eleven, knowing the family of Mario and Cuomo.
I would like to move that.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Resolution number twelve, extending the existing contract between Essex County and the Regional Office of Sustainable Clerdom by classic directions and visitors' girl. Periodary, January first, twenty-fifteen through March thirty-first, twenty-fifteen.
Moved by Mr. Cleese, seconded by Mr. Moore, under discussion. No problem, all clear.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Verri.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Scottawa.
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Flea.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Mornell.
Yes.
Mr. Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Burnell.
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Bullock.
Yeah.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Move a resolution from the floor. Mr. Blake, I'd like to move a resolution of the donor's sister family of Robert Swett, Robert Swett Sr. He was a councilman in town justice when I first moved to the North Country. That was at the time that he shared both those duties. And his son is currently a councilman for the town of Blue. Thank you, Mr. Blake, on second. Can you stand in the background?
Thank you very much.
On behalf of this organization, we have been advised by the county attorney, you don't need to ask them to move. Further resolution from the floor, Mr. Moore.
I'd like to move a resolution to readfully mark Whitney as position of Democratic Election Commissioner for a term of two years.
Seconded by that, seconded by Mr. Connell and Mr. McNally, under discussion. All papers, six hundred and fifty-nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Further resolution from the floor. Mr. Cannon.
Sheriff, I don't have a resolution as such, but you were looking to it earlier. I have been around a long time. Been involved in almost all of the debates ever since I took office in nineteen ninety-nine. Firm believer in the free press, they serve a purpose, keep our country free. And they've had publications in various papers that I've not read with, some I have. It's pretty unusual for me to make reference to anything that's been printed. This same publication that I defer to actually called the abolition of the board supervisor a while back. I obviously didn't agree with that. But they did have a editorial here recently where a preference was made to one of the Adarantac groups, Protect is the name of it. And they nailed it right on the head, this is a stratus group, not a group that's trying to make make things better or comfortable to any customers, they just want to close the Adarantac down. And I agree wholeheartedly with that editorial. I don't know exactly how to do anything different, but at least get it in the record of this meeting that I fully support the comments made by the population as it relates to protecting the Adarantac.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cannon and Mr. Scottawa. I'd like to second that, I think it should be reflected in there. I've also been around for a number of years and the editorial was well said, and it was true. This group, that the Adarantac is there to sell service. I cannot recall any economic development prior to the entire Adarantac part that they had ever come out in the source. The issue would be the closure of Mirage Shock and other presidents in the Adarantac never put a stand. So it's, they are self-serving. As Mr. Cannon stated, as the articles states, the editorial opinion, they just didn't see us all eyeing. I certainly support the editorial, I support what I can, and just so out of the state. Do you want to make it as a resolution? Moved by Mr. Cannon, seconded by Mr. Scottawa. Mr. Palmer's helping me out here. Resolution congratulating that publications on the editorial in reference to.
Did your organization call for ten?
Ten, yeah.
For a job, hold on.
For a job, hold on. Further comments or questions? All papers, six hundred and fifty-nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Further resolution from the floor. There's going to be one coming from the floor, the jury's going to read. I apologize for the events that have taken place over the last two days. And there is not a chairman's luncheon today. We will be changing the ways of meeting, it will be doing a resolution now to the last Friday of the month here. And it'll be an afternoon meeting and then it'll be the chairman's luncheon, dinner, what have you. Judy and Nina are working out details. It's like there might be a vaccine out, so it's still essential moves here. And I know you don't like Friday night meetings, I know Mr. Preston knows he in on Friday afternoon, but y'all have to get out early that day. But we're gonna, we're gonna have a luncheon and we're gonna have a little party that night and Judy and Dana will get you all the information, so I appreciate that. So Judy, the resolution.